I think we'll go ahead and get started since it's 6 o'clock, so I'd like to welcome everybody to the meeting. Amanda is sick this evening, so it'll just be the four of us tonight. The mission statement, just a reminder for everyone, ESAT County School empower all students to become productive, responsible citizens of an ever-changing local society. So we will move on to the agenda, and I don't believe there are any changes to the agenda unless anybody else has anything to add. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I don't move. Second.
Oh, favor.
Aye.
Move on to the consent items?
Any questions on the minutes of the financial statement? On the bills, anything on the first page you want to talk about?
Questions?
Yeah, what did I type down? We had some travel expense, we had some primarily technology expenses, some donors and stuff like that, and some staff development, conference registrations.
Like overnight stays, sometimes talking about a credit or hotel.
I think we had a specialized conference, as a matter of fact, on that one. On the next page, towards the bottom, Activity Fund, you'll see the payments to the girls' union and the high school athletic association. That's for the regional events we host, so we only get, I think we keep 10 or 15 percent of the gate, rest goes back to the associations.
Do you know if the one was for the graphic edge for the supplies?
No, I don't really think so. Was that the practice jerseys, the university practice jerseys that came in? Or like, do we have more sets of equipment? We did get some new, actually game jerseys for JV. JV got some new equipment for basketball.
Okay, game jerseys.
It could be that.
Well, this I said, I was told he was talking about.
Tell her to show them to us.
Yeah.
So... And then on the next page, the Scholastic bill has the wrong amount. It should be 115790 instead of 123897. So we're going to get that corrected before we mail the check. And then the next fund, it's been called Lost Fund, Lost Fund, and now the Safe Fund, and the state's starting to use the term Safe Fund, so I'm going to try to start using that, although I've used everything else. In there, we've got a third or four payments for the four buses we bought two years ago from, so getting those wrapped up. And that's all I got. Unless you've got some more questions.
Down on the, on the first page, on the fund balance, it looks to me like this last year, you know, we get over 102,000 better than the year before. About 450,000 better than two years ago. But if you look at the, kind of the trend, eight, nine, and 10, we're going downhill in 12 months. Is there something going on there that you can see, or is it just, I mean, it's not a lot of money?
No. I don't really think so. Could be some timing issues.
Yeah.
State aid just started again in September here, so, and then the big tax payment was in October, so I would think we're pretty, pretty stable. I can't think of any big changes maybe have taken place over that timeframe.
Well, you know, if you look, if you look back at the two-year goes, you know, we get better every month.
Just the opposite.
We get better every month, and then the year gets worse every month, so you just don't want that trend to continue, I guess.
You want to talk?
Are there any other comments? Does someone motion to approve the consent items?
Second.
Oh, favor.
Aye.
To the superintendent's report? Okay. Mike, did you have, before we go into the ones I have listed, did you have a report for the board?
I have some information if they would like to hear. I just, I have a couple, some information on the summer school that is going to be required through the law 276.68 that the Department of Ed and our legislators decided, and it's, it's just, I've got some sheets for you. Thank you, ma'am. On this first one, and I'll make it brief if I can, because I know we've got a lot of reports tonight. If you flip to the second page, it, it really explains exactly the things that we are required to do in ESAT County at the elementary school. And all of the 2014 requirements where it says no later, they are all in place right now, which is good, because we're far from done. The ones that we will be looking at, if you look on page three, there is a section there that talks about summer school, and it is required to be in place by '17. They had a webinar last week, it's really starting to fire up a little bit now, they're starting to really give us some more information. And they said schools can, can opt for a waiver, but they didn't really tell us how we could make that happen, so, and they said more information will be coming out summer of 2016. So we will, we'll keep an eye on, on things that are starting to take place, and we'll move through that. And the second sheet that I'm going to give you is just what is all required, and this is probably going to be a little bit more interesting to you as board members, because when this all starts to take place, you may start getting some real questions about the whole summer school piece with third grade and the requirements. And this was a piece that came out this fall, and it, it really has some, some information in there that you may start getting some questions about, and as you read through that, and I won't read it to you, you can do that yourself, you'll have a better understanding of what that is going to start to look like as we move forward. So I had, I talked with a one of our teachers today about attending a meeting, you know, the first part of December, and one of the requirements is 75 hours, and they were pretty clear to me that they didn't know if they wanted to spend 75 hours in their summer for summer school. I mean, that's, that's 12 and a half days of six-hour days, or 25 days of current three-hour days that we do right now, and it could be very interesting. Those numbers are, that changes the complexity a lot, it starts to look like a year-round school type thing for some students, but...
Well, even the educational level and experience, we have head of the summer school must hold, almost says that in a school our size, it may have to be someone like Mike that's employed through the summer. Bigger schools will have people, people with reading specialists or an assistant superintendent of reading instruction, so that person who works year-round already, supervises summer school, they're in schools all of our sizes in rural Iowa, we're not going to have the employee and a teacher that has that type of license. And then think about money. There's no, like, funding stream for that.
This isn't like the teacher leadership?
This is just like, okay, we're going to find, we'll pay for it.
This comes all out of the, there is a literacy grant that we get, but our current summer school last year, which wasn't nearly that much time, almost ate up.
As I say, we eat that money out of, like, nobody's business, so...
Yeah. And so...
So my first question, as soon as you said this, was, will our, will the summer school program that we offer now take care of this? But obviously, if they have 75 hours, it won't.
No. We're going to have, we're going to have to do some changes. Our summer school staff that we have, that we have this year, I'll have to commend them a lot, the AEA operatives have the opportunity to go and use some of the best practices for summer school, because the Department of Ed put a study together in the last couple of years and found the best practices. And we went to the AEA as a group this year and actually implemented a lot of those best practices, which you'll find in the requirement, within the requirements that they have on these pages. But it won't, it won't cover everything that we have in here by any means at all.
And what's interesting now is we bought that whole set of resources and books for that program, that's a program that had been under a study and was supported by this, the thinking, but I am betting you and I would hopefully agree, Mike, that probably won't even be the same set of resources that we can use for the 75 hours. I feel like...
No, and really, what we did this year, this past summer, we targeted first and second grade, knowing that in '17, some of those first graders are moving, we were trying to target our younger kids just to try and get to where we would have very few having to, to fall into this.
Get out front of it.
Yeah. So, interesting reading. If you, if you ever have any questions, please, my, my, my door is open, and please ask, and as I get new information, which we will be getting new information, we'll, we'll keep sending it your way, because I think you will, as board members, when this really comes down and parents are saying, you know, we're talking retention, we're talking summer schools, we're talking those types of things, you'll probably end up getting some questions, so I'll keep, I'll try and keep as much information in front of you as I keep it.
As of now, this is third grade only?
Yes, and what's interesting, you know, so kids are identified either in summer, are either in summer school or retained. That does not give the parents much choice. And so what if, Mike and I talked about just transportation-related, just summer school. Parents work off, off year-round, or lots and lots of things to do, so it's generally just the staff that's retained, you do have the resources around, but we're going to have to, we're going to have to transport kids. And we're not talking about, you know, hundreds of kids, but if they're in Timbuktu, I guess I remember, it's a transportation director, so...
Are they in Timbuktu, fella?
They're in Timbuktu.
To guarantee, to make sure, and they have to meet a certain percentage of attendance as well. So if they're not there so many days out of the days offered, then it's a different problem that we have to deal with. So we have to make sure that they come, and to do that, we'll probably need to transport.
And when we talked about six hours rather than the three hours that we do, we're doing now, then you're talking about lunch.
Now, are you talking about just reading for six hours? Because this is really...
Yeah, this is all about, this is all about literacy. This has nothing to do with anything else.
That would not be very good practice, by the way.
I was going to say, you had some third graders taking a nap, I think. Maybe a fifth grader.
Yeah. It is just something that we really have to taste, this is going to be very interesting.
Oh, yeah, we've got to look at time and see maybe though.
Yeah, I wanted, I was hoping to get it out in front right away, and you have some information, and you can start thinking about it.
Would that do away, then, what do we do with the younger kids? Is this program strictly for the third grade? You might be asked to make a decision about that. Because, I mean, there's a whole other group of kids who've been offering programs to...
You've got first grade, you've got second, you know, or you had third, fourth. We've put first and, we've put first and second graders together the last couple of years, but then, okay, so if you're asking certain staff to go, say, 25 days to three hours, how, when are you going to do that, other one, and do we have enough staff to even? It'll, it'll, it's going to bring about some real interesting conversations, so...
Some of the really small schools, you know, quite a bit smaller than us, if they happen to have borders beside each other, are talking about things like, well, let's pool our kids together, because we don't have enough teachers that would be interested in teaching this, and then maybe transport together, and try to do a joint program, just so that they can have the staff that they might need to help as well, so...
Yeah, this makes sense. This really is a no-choice.
No.
So...
And again, no funding stream, so we'll, we'll make sure that you know what's going on.
Thank you so much.
It is, thank you, and we're happy to hear that. Kevin, your report is in the board package, is there anything you'd like to say about the middle school, high school?
Nothing that's not included in the report right now, actually. The essence of it is, kind of piggybacking off Mike, it's about literacy and reading comprehension. So the middle school and the high school are honed in on what was called Think Alouds, which is basically, a teacher kind of pins back their head, opens up their brain, and really walks, walks kids through what they're thinking, when they read, and what practices they use when they read what's called complex texts. And so that's really the, the focus. There's four teachers that have been instrumental in, in working with our staff. It's Bonnie Muggenberg and Teresa Vittine from the middle school, and then Eric McCollum and Henry Vine have been at the high, from the high school, and they've been working together along with Barb and Denny and Lake Fisher to develop the PD for, for this year.
Any better comments on, on, to get this straight, please, ma'am, or to... I asked Amanda Miller, to be present, we had a very successful career day, some of you were involved with that, and so she's here just to make sure that everyone, kind of, it's the drift of what happened that day and how things went, and what did you like, like, for careers?
Just leave it that way, maybe on the battlefield. So people can see that. Thank you for inviting me. No, to talk about the career day that we had on the fourth, and some of you, like Mrs. Kuroff said, were involved, really came from the planning committee with me, Kristen Hinn, the middle school counselor, Becky Halber, the elementary counselor, Seth Urkeldein with ISU Extension, and Cora Lauer from Boulders Industries. And we've been talking about it actually for a few years, and really didn't know exactly how to get something of this magnitude, I feel like, off the ground, and Cora approached us and said, hey, I've been involved in a couple of career days at other schools, is this something that you want to talk about and get going here at our school? And so, starting in June, we started planning, and on, on the fourth, we had our career day, and I just, I'm going to take you kind of through the day, and then if you have questions in the end. We had Speed Harrick as our keynote speaker, which was great, and I'm not going to read this to you, but a couple of things that he highlighted is basically that when it comes down to it, it's the student's responsibility to take care of themselves. So, you know, teachers, parents, employers, there's a lot of people along the way to help foster you and give you opportunities, but it's up to you, basically, to, to do it in the end. And then I liked the other thing that he said was, if you get along with your coworkers and treat people with respect, you like what you're doing, it's not a job. But all of those employability skills, those are, are important things. So that was a big part of what Speed taught us, taught the kids. Then in the morning, we had resume writing, employability skills, interview session, and college and military fair. In the building, your resume session, I think this was pretty cool. The kids headed here and had an opportunity to go through with Cora, some great resumes and some pretty awful resumes, but it was a good example of, wow, this is what you don't want your resume to look like. And then every single student, eight, 12, that's what this paid in the day, every single student, eight, 12, brought a resume with them, and they were able to meet for five or 10 minutes individually with professional adults to go over with them some critique on their resume. And I think we kind of touched on all throughout the day, what you're doing here in middle school and high school, it's all about building your resume, because when you leave here, that's, that's what your showpiece is going to be. So when you go to college, it's all about building your resume and getting your foot in the door and getting that first job. Interviewing, this was, this was eye-opening, and some of our administrators that attended, they learned some tips too here. But kind of some do's and don'ts, some helpful hints, first impressions, how important. We put it out there to the students, to look your best that day. One of the things in that folder that I passed out to you was kind of like a bingo card, and those students who took an effort to look nice that day, whether it was combing your hair and wearing jeans, because that really might be your best, and for some of our students, that is true. Or we had students who wore suits, so they got to put a little checkmark on the card, and in the end, if you got at least eight out of the 10 things on that card, then you could go into the drawing for some door prizes, and let's say if it's motivated by things. So we did that, but the interviewing session was really talking about first impressions, what not to do, what to do, just kind of along the same lines that Speed said, is you have all these opportunities along the way, and you have, you know, maybe 20, 30, 60 minutes, if you're lucky, to showcase yourself. And she kind of talked about some, some ways not to get another interview, like looking at your cell phone, some of those no-brainers, but it does happen. So I think it was a good eye-opener for the kids. Employability skills. In this session, we partnered with Iowa Workforce Development, which is now called Iowa Works, you're probably more familiar with workforce development, but Ashley and Lisa did an excellent job from there, talking about ethical behavior, social responsibility, some social media kind of things, some excellent things to do on social media to not get a job, and some ways to present yourself in a positive light that can help with your future careers. I think they gave some examples too of some students they knew who were going into law school, who were never admitted because of things they'd done when they were younger, and put on social media, so it was a lot of those good reminders as well. Then the college and military fair, these were the entities we had represented, Iowa, of course, Morningside, Iowa State, Wayne State, La James, Faust, La James International, it was different, Kirkwood Community College, Iowa Central, USD, BV, Briar Cliff, the National Guard, Army and Army Reserves, Drake University, and Northwest Iowa Community College. I feel like as the years go on, that we do this, we'll be able to get more and more colleges represented, it's just, even though it started in June, the schedules for them are already really booked, so I was happy that we're able to get this many different entities represented. We also had Jim Dowling came down for voter registration, for anybody that was 17 and a half or older, they could sign up to vote. And then really, the heart of the day, we had 44 professions represented, anything from cosentology to mortuary science. And that was, this is the little list I gave you, has all the different careers, but I just wanted to show a few of them. Jackie was at the day talking about being accountant, we had Emily Bush talking about journalism, Bobby Belt, who, or Bobby Bell, Bobby Blessington, who is a, a former grad from here, he's a commercial pilot, he flies for Delta, and he arranged his scheduling to be here from Detroit for this day, so that was pretty cool. We had Jeffrey Phillipson from SAC City, who also teaches for Iowa Central, he came and did a culinary arts presentation, and actually did a hands-on for students, they were able to make a professional gourmet dessert, anybody that went to that session, that was pretty cool. We had Troopers Whistler and Farley talking about the State Patrol, Michaela Schroeder came in for dental hygiene, Hannah Brotherson came for mortuary science, and it was kind of interesting, one of the students that went, they came out of the session, I didn't even know what mortuary science, and they didn't even know, they didn't know what it was, but it was interesting, we had a couple of students that said, wow, I really don't want to do that, so now they know. But I just even had a student in this morning that said, you know, I went to the mortuary science session, and I think I might actually be interested in that, is there any way that I could get an internship to find out if that's something that I really want to spend a good chunk of, you know, of money in learning how to do that? So that was great. Job security there. John Scott for insurance, and then we had Greg Trader in for cattle feeding, and Jay Brown came in for, he had a whole bunch of different people with him, but kind of along the business manager side of things, and Mary Ludwig came in for marketing. We had Chris Warhoff, another alum, he came in for physical therapy, and this was an interesting session, because he was there for physical therapy, and then there was a physical therapy assistant. So it was really nice, I think, for students to be able to compare and contrast, you know, the six, seven-year degree versus the four or five semester degree, and just what were the similarities and differences there. Becky Halber, she's running this session with one of her relatives, he was out in Oregon, he works for ESPN, and he's one of the guys that works in the trucks at the major league baseball game, you know, working the 85 hours a week, but he kind of took, Skyped them through the truck, and that was really interesting. Ben was here with Steve Spotts and Jared Meister, just talking about all the different areas of banking, loan, bank president, the whole, the whole gamut there. So we had 44 different careers represented, like I said, that was on this sheet. A couple other cute things, I guess I feel like from the day, we had nursing in the session, was RN and a CNA in the same one, and there were a couple of gals that came out of that session, and it was a man that was the RN, and they said, did you know that boys can be nurses? And I thought, holy cow, you guys are in ninth grade. Okay, well, great, I mean, I'm glad, I'm glad you learned that, you know, because I think you guys know, it's kind of like preaching to the choir, but the longer I'm in this job, the more I realize that our students today need us to provide them, not that we can make them do it, but they need us to provide them with more opportunities. You know, we had 44 careers here, some that the students didn't know of, in the next 10 years, how many careers are going to be out there that we don't even know about now? So... And at the end, when we did door prizes, which was ever-popular, the first few names that we drew out, we made the students come up and kind of tell us something that they learned from the day, and I thought this was a great kind of quote to end the, end the day on, was never underestimate the power of yourself. So wow, that, that's exactly, exactly what we wanted them to get out of the day. And then a few other quotes from the students, we had them do a post-survey, just kind of how the day go, that kind of stuff, and four quotes here. It opened my eyes about different things I can do in the future. I think it helps spike interest in careers we may not have thought about before. In the future, I believe this is something we should do again, it helps us kids seriously think about the future in college. If we start thinking early, it could help us decide on a major or what we truly want to do as a career. This is important for us seniors, juniors, and even eighth graders. So that was good. And this is probably the last one here, it does make me chuckle, but this is probably the one that's the most sincere. It was a pretty fun day. I thought it was going to be dumb, but I actually really enjoyed it. So someone who even went in with a less than positive attitude thought, jeez, I actually got something out of this.
Kind of piggyback a little bit, because that was on a Wednesday. And the next, the very next day, Thursday afternoon, evening, and Friday morning, I was in banking at a statewide superintendent's meeting, and we met with about 18 business leaders across the state of Iowa. And I've got a partial list of, like, Raider, Devine Partnership, Mid-American Energy, Retto, Chamber of Commerce, the Assistant Counsel, someone who worked for the city of Waverly, Principal Financial, Mercy Medical Center, Wealth Blue Money, there's several manufacturing companies, one of them that was very interesting, I'm interested, teen problem solving, and then just being, just logic. And we talked about this, a couple of the CTVD teachers and me, about just, kids can't do much. You know, they can't fix stuff, they, if it's broken, it's like, nah, you know, I don't know what to do, versus those kids that can just do a little bit of everything, and it's like, you know, I can get that one more started. No tinker and monkey, and, and they taught both business leaders, talked a lot about that kind of person in the workplace. They were very clear that for us to be careful about steering kids toward four-year degrees, because the demand in highway is not four-year degrees. 12-month programs with specialized skill development, two-year programs, and they're just like, we have, we're always going to have plenty of four-year, three people. And our businesses and industries are really looking for one- or two-year people. And Wealth Blue Money talked about the fact that they would like, they could probably hire 15 refrigeration specialists that are in a 12-month program, because they're waiting to expand their company, because their chemists have developed new flavors. But we need to add more refrigeration, and we can't add more refrigeration because we don't have the technicians to service it in-house. Welders, all across the industrial groups. Welders, in a couple of years, will make $60,000 or $65,000 dollars with good vendor packages. The companies that were represented by business and industry said, you have to help families and kids understand that it isn't, these businesses, these industrial businesses are clean, safe places to work. They're not like manufacturing plants that we thought of 40 years ago. The guy that was the HR director for the XL Specialized Trailer said, we are only one of two trailer, custom trailer companies in the United States. We also work for, we send lots of product out overseas, and he said, you have big, odd-shaped things, and you call us to make a trailer, and it's all done, he said, we don't have an engineer that defines it. an engineer that defines it. We have people that know and can get how to do things in a team, and can, you know, work with product. And he said, we could hire ten welders today. It's a company of two hundred in the Delaware County, Manchester. He said, we pay our workers after two years sixty-two thousand dollars because we can't find enough employee, employees in this county, so they have to move here. So we've got to pay something that's good enough to get them to move from wherever in northeast Iowa. And that was a very common point. Now tonight, just before I left for my home for summer, the school administrators of Iowa group, the superintendents group, in early in February, we're meeting again, and now we're having those same business people back, plus us, and we're inviting, now the question is how, how are we going to do this? And the next piece between us and Word are the post-secondary education. So they have a list of forty people from colleges and universities, community colleges, tech schools, and state universities, and some private schools to come to February fourth. The next piece is, so now what are you guys going to do? Because we can't make that leap from that eighteen-year-old to that twenty-two-year-old. And it's, it's been great conversation, and they were shocked at our meeting. They asked us at every table, so what's your most common problem? And each time, we would say, excluding money. And at the end, they had some representative, two representatives from their group address our group of superintendents and said, we obviously didn't know that money was an issue. And it was like, really? But they asked, so what can we do as a group with legislators and the governor? Because this thing is like a dog chasing his own tail, you know, that if you can't give us what we need, then we don't help you get what you need. This thing will always spiral like this. And the manufacturing companies in particular just said, one of the caps on the top of employment in Iowa right now, even though the unemployment rate is low, is that we need more workers, because we can't expand, expand our industries, because we don't have the right kind of labor. So if we had more of that, like at Wealth Blue Bunny, then we can do that next building project, you know, and then we can add that next to the employees. And they employ two thousand people at Blue Bunny, which surprised the heck out of me.
In the Mars.
In the Mars, yeah. She was another person who said, we don't need another chemistry engineer, we need one- and two-year degree people. I honestly think in some of these places, if a really talented high school kid could have the resume and interview, they could probably get their education paid for by just saying, I will do this, but what is it you need me to do? They talked about in refrigeration, they need them to study a very specific refrigeration, twelve-month program, they have to learn to work with ammonia in those refrigeration units. And most kids, when they do getting in refrigeration, don't choose that as that kind of niche, but that's what they have to have. And she said, we just cannot find people. So it was a great tie-in, and you know, I felt like calling Amanda to say, oh, ooh, here we go, there's some more of this. But just kind of on that state level, I think that our administrator group is going to start working very hard at trying to make those pieces, the post-secondary, the workforce people, and K-12 schools kind of circle around what this issue is related to the workforce in Iowa. And it tied very well with what kids were saying to you, even about, you know what, I don't, this mother, I don't have to go to college for four years. You're like, oh. They can't. I mean, there still is a place for them, but not for eighty percent of our seniors. And they can work in Iowa, and they can work in communities that are not here, very much like SAC City, and like you, and Wal Lake, and Auburn. What are you going to do in the future?
Well.
Not tomorrow, but.
Yeah. We kind of, as a group, we think logistically, every other year would be something feasible, but our hearts tell us we really need to do something every year. So we're kind of looking into, how is this going to look different next year? We won't have it set up exactly the same, but what we're kind of talking about right now is having the morning set up sort of like we had the afternoon this year, in some half-hour sessions, you know, kind of one-on-one with someone to really hear about the profession. But then in the afternoon, opening it up to more of like a, a job fair and a college fair, and having, you know, more business and industry, and more institutions represented, and even welcoming in our, our community, you know? So if someone is interested in Wealth Blue Bunny, you know, maybe we can get them if we say, hey, we have this three-hour, you know, and we're opening it up to our community, kind of a job fair kind of thing, and getting in more colleges too, you know, maybe some community members are, are ready to go back to, to school in refrigeration or welding or whatever it might be. So that's kind of what we're looking at for next year. And then the following year, kind of going and catching all the students and going back to our resume again, and interviewing skills again, and kind of doing it in every other year kind of thing, so no one misses any one part. So that's kind of what we're, we're thinking. From the comments from the students, plus the very next day, actually even the night of the event, we had people calling or emailing and saying, why didn't you invite me? I want to come, you know, I want to come, next time, please invite me. So I, I feel like if people are calling to say, oh, I want to be a part of this, then we kind of have, have something good going here that we want to continue.
John, you're kind of a eighth grader. How did, how did the response from her?
I'm trying to remember the two or three sessions she went to. I think one of them was maybe the marketing session with Mary Ludwig, if I remember right. But I think the part for her was more with the resume stuff and some comments on the interview. Of course, at her age, it may be typical, she doesn't know which of those two or three sessions she wants to go to.
Did you think she got some compliments about her resume, or like volunteer kinds of things that she had?
Yeah, that was one of the, one of the comments that she got on her resume was, it's not all about your grades and your academics, but also on what you've given back, so being part of these other groups is important, to build the entire resume.
Yeah, pretty good message for a eighth grader to.
And I did participate in the resume writing too, and I think it was eye-opening for the kids, but I think it was also eye-opening for me as an individual coming in to see just the areas that we can help with. And I think the five minutes, you know, as you got into the juniors and the seniors, five minutes of one-on-one time with them was not nearly enough. I mean, you wanted to give them, you know, I, I wrote a bunch of notes all over resumes and, you know, marked stuff up and tried to give as much help as you could in five minutes, but really fifteen to twenty with some of those seniors, I think would be time well spent for that, and to take that back then, and then hopefully benefit from that. But it was, it was very interesting to see, you know, them come in with their stuff, and just kind of help them think through, because some of them are like, I don't have any knowledge of your stuff. And they just needed some help in thinking about, you know, did you help with Girl Scouts? Or did you help with a church dinner or something? They, they just couldn't get their mind around that, yeah. Like anything you can do.
Well, and I think there was extra impact too, having outside business professionals come in, you know, teachers, you know, or in personal finance or business, the business area, whatever, they can tell the kids day after day after day, but then it almost kind of becomes like a mom and dad thing, day after day after day, you're telling me the same thing, but geez, when, you know, a business professional comes in and says, hey, X, Y, and Z is looking pretty good, and ooh, let's talk about this, you know? That kind of, that kind of means a little something more than mom and dad or your teacher that you hear every single day, telling you the same thing, so.
Very good job, I think, I encourage you to do it every year and so much.
Thank you. Jake Granoff is our school liaison. I'm a senior patient, patient lately. I'm not sure if all of you have had them before, but just kind of based on what happened this last month, especially the top of that line, we have a school resource officer, and sometimes when we get mail or correspondence, it'll come to our resource officer, so we forward it to Jake, but that's not really the position that we have him hired for. So that, and, and having him come is so that you see him, you know him, you know what his job is at the SAC, and also so that you know he doesn't throw people out of their chairs on the ground and arrest them. So, because people in our district could say, well, we have a resource officer, is that person like law enforcement? And this is what the board can feel confident that you've seen him and knowing, and who's going to talk to you about what he does in the SAC County.
My name's Jake Granoff. I went to UNI, got a degree in terminology, and then I worked at Cherokee Mental Health for a year, and then the last three and a half years, I worked with probation in AB County. So I kind of have a wide variety of clientele. I've dealt with kids from all walks of life. Came to this job, and a lot of what I do is work with the at-risk, the most at-risk kids, build relationships with them, a lot of times they don't have positive role models in their life. And then I work with homework, attendance, you know, if the kid's in school, Mr. Litter or, or Danny will send over, hey, this kid hasn't been here for a while, can you check in on it? Here, there's more kids that I go to the house to see. Alternative school I work with as well, and those kids, a lot of times aren't, their attendance isn't the best. And I perform a wide range of things. Anything they ask me to do, I'm more than willing to do it. At the middle school, my role's a little different than the high school. At the high school, I have a lot of ten kids that I meet with on a weekly basis, and we go over anything from how their days go in their weekend, things at home, to schoolwork, attendance. Middle school, a lot of it's supervision, also, I have also have ten kids there that I meet with, a lot of it's supervision, and if kids get kicked out of class, I deal with that. Here, Mr. Litter deals with that. Elementary school, I just started a mentor, checking connect with a kid, that's in the beginning stages. He's the first kid I've had there, and so far, that's working really well. But really, I just, anything they ask me to do, I do. Sometimes it's supervision stuff, just, hey, can you go watch lunch at the middle school? Can you go to alternative school and watch the kid there? So I'm really open to any, it's, it evolves every week.
So with your ten kids, you meet both at the high school and in the middle school? Is it a scheduled timeframe that you meet with them, or just kind of?
It's really, for me, and when I first started, they gave me a list of, here are some kids that you can look out for, and really, I just started developing, all I noticed, this kid is Miss Lauder, this kid's grades are poor, so I just started pulling them in. And some kids I don't be with every single week, some kids don't need it, some kids I meet with twice a week. I try to take them out of the study halls to high school, it's a lot easier. Middle school, sometimes I have to take them out of class, but it's at the end of the class period, I try and work around their schedule as much as I can.
For some kids, like through the summer?
Yeah. Children report, kids, a lot of times, they need community service done, and they don't have a tracker right now. I know they're working on getting one, but, so I'll help out with that kind of stuff. I may have summer school, the, for the high school anyway, they have mine over just in case they need it months.
Any questions on the board? Lots to a lot of kids over there.
Yeah, it's a little, I keep track, I have to keep a log of all the kids I meet with, and it's a little over a hundred contacts among each kid, in some range from a longer period of time, something like an hour or something like that.
Thanks, Jake.
Of course, update on teacher leadership and compensation. I think you have seen this before, but it is the, there's a front and back sheet right And you can see later, the more traffic that we're going to come, I recommend to you our instructional leaders for the positions that, I don't know, what I call the front page is the instructional leader position. It's one position full-time, and it's a fifteen additional contract day position, so we're going to recommend that person to you tonight, but if we turn it over, we now have applications for the halftime positions. It's called a teacher leader rather than an instructional leader. We were hoping for five applicants, well, more than five applicants, but to hire five halftime positions, we have three applicants. We'll be doing interviews November thirtieth with those three applicants, and those on halftime in a classroom teaching and halftime instructional coaching. And you can see they have ten additional contract days with a teacher leadership summary supplement there. And these are just kind of the summary of what their roles and jobs will be, as well as some more specific duties and responsibilities. But this is just an update. By the December meeting, I should be able to recommend to you then who those halftime people are, whether it be one of those three, or all three of them. And the second semester will move to the model teachers, and to the mentor teachers, and the last group is for our professional learning community advisors or leaders. I'm not sure what we'll do about not having, you know, with only three applicants, obviously we won't have five. So I'm not sure what we'll do. And you know, maybe if we have the right three there, and the right person in the full-time, maybe this first year, we go with that number, and just see how things work. So.
The other, the other two classes that we talked about that will come later in the year, how many of those people are you looking for?
A lot.
So are you, are you concerned that you won't get the number that you're looking for there, because you didn't here?
No, I'm not. Actually, we only have, we wrote our grant for two mentor positions, and we currently have five first-year teachers, so there are five mentors. Those five mentors would actually like to continue to be with those five first-year teachers, because they feel like it seems a lot to be their mentor for one year, and then somebody completely different to us. So that might be in place, or we add some positions just temporarily. We have plenty of TLC coaches trained, who are now coaches that are building, now they just be paid to be a coach. So I'm certainly hoping they elevate, yeah, that might be interesting.
So this was just a, this teacher leader position was just something that maybe people were too excited about right now, but.
Well, I'm wondering if people wonder how it's going to work, and they're like, you know, maybe next year I'll apply, or there's another opening, but I'm not going to do it this year. The model teachers are not out of their classroom at all, actually. I don't know if we'll find enough of those, but if you remember clear back from the beginning, what, the beginning, what are their kind of pillars of what we have to do is to have twenty-five percent of our eligible teachers have to be involved in teacher leadership. And as long as we're close to that number, we're fine. So we were on the, a little bit on the heavy side with the number of positions we had, and then if we don't have, and then if all three of these applicants are selected, we're short two, we're just going to, we thought we'll just go with that. No, and I, you don't want to change the position then to meet somebody's needs, what other people have already applied, so, and it might be just fine to go a little slower and next summer jump across. So these are just those job descriptions again, so that you know what's going on.
And are these the only two that have additional contract days? The other positions are more just?
No, the TLC coaches have a little bit of extra time, and the mentors do, the model teachers do not, but it's much shorter, it's like two days of additional supplementing. So what comes out of the TLC grant dollars is actually that teacher's pay, who qualifies their position, plus their supplement, okay? Whatever the supplement is that's listed here.
Anything else?
No, not far yet.
Okay. Thank you to everybody that presented information tonight. Any unfinished business?
Nope.
We'll move on to new business, approved memorandum of understanding for the teacher leadership grant.
Yep. One of the things that we have to have in place is a supplemental contract, in other words, a contract that has, that will deal with supplemental salary for these positions, and that doesn't have to be approved by the, back in the air contract, and we'll bring that to you to take a look at it. It'll look different than our Schedule B contract. But what does have to be approved by both our union, which would be the SAC County Education Association, and the board, is what's called a memorandum of understanding. And what we need to spell out in that is where in the current master contract are going to be additions and/or changes to what we typically do. Like a great example is, these teachers in these positions will have, if they're currently teaching at all in the classroom, will have their regular union-approved, board-approved evaluation, okay? They have one of those formal evaluations every three years. Annually, getting the people in the TLC grant will be reviewed on a different set of criteria, because now their job has changed. So if I was a halftime high school science teacher and a halftime teacher leader position, let's say, Kevin would still do my every-three-year evaluation for my instruction in the classroom for half a day, but then the administrators, plus my, my peers that I work with, will also do an evaluation of my teacher leadership position. And everything about teacher leadership, if you remember one thing, is that it's annual, okay? So it's a year at a time, and at the end of the year, we say, yes, we'd like to have them continuing. And at the end of the year, we say, "Yes, we'd like to have them continue in that position because the evaluation says that that requires your job performance." But then that person has to say, that teacher has to say, "I want the position for another year. I want to stay in this position." And so it's kind of a two-way street. But this memorandum now just lays out some of the things about the teacher leadership agreement that are different than they are in the master contract. And the education association, the union met last week and did an electronic vote late in the week and passed this memorandum. And we worked with their, I worked with their president and vice president on the language we wanted. This came primarily from our attorney, when she has worked with other schools that are in our first and second years. We made just a slight tweak in this and the rest of it, we just held out and said, "No, you know what, this is how it has to be." And they were good. They approved it unanimously and so I recommend that you approve this memorandum.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye. Shane and Chris, without the motion, just a second.
Yep.
Very good.
Okay, we will move on to the job descriptions for the secretaries.
Yep, we're still working with our partner in our Weaver District, who we hired for some HR work. And she has worked with both of the elementary principals and the elementary secretaries, the middle school secretary and the high school secretary. So the language in the job description has been proposed from our association of school boards and there were just little tweaks that were made to it. Nothing of significance based on what their actual jobs are. So those secretaries have seen models and have agreed that those of general describe what their jobs are. And so I recommend that you approve those.
Is it me or number six and number 14 almost identical on every one of them?
Number six and number 14. Six in the first long list?
Yep. I mean, it's, there's one word difference, but it's exactly the same word for all three positions.
Well, you're right.
That does show that I read it.
I am proud of Jake. You know what, before I strike it though, I'm going to move, I want to talk to Sharon, the HR person, if there's a different intent in this that we're not seeing, but I will ask about it. Actually, I read them and never noticed it, so.
I'll be honest, I had to read three of them before I called on the last one.
Do we want to go ahead and approve or do we want to wait for that clarification?
If you want to give me authority to either delete it or leave it, I'll make sure you know what to do.
I'll make that motion.
All of those in favor?
Where we have that, Mark, with our, we've gotten a lot of meetings over the last few months.
Yeah, business manager and the two...
That'll be a short list.
The two secretaries of his office, we haven't started teachers or associate, we started associates, but those will probably be on almost, I think there's going to be like three groups of them because there's kind of like three general categories. Like it'd be the group that work one-on-one and then a group that work more in special education but aren't one-on-one. And then if we have any other kind of associates, we're more general to like a library associate. We don't really have classroom associates, but it'd be like the library associate and that sort of thing. So Sharon and I've worked on these all, but that's kind of how we've tried to lay them out. They haven't had success, the associates, and then we're going to do them for teachers that are just kind of general in nature. Though, CTE teachers, Korean technical, will have something a little different than a classroom teacher, than a counselor, than, so. Anyway, usually, I'd say by early winter, mid-winter, we should have job descriptions for everyone.
Just a question on the evaluation. I know you said that the teachers are every three years. Are these individuals the same annual? Okay. Okay, we will move on to the discussion of the school bus.
If you look at the page in your packet regarding this, let's start at the bottom of that page. And we just kind of laid out for an average school bus, propane versus diesel and at today's prices, the difference in operating costs, which is significant, about $5,000 a year if we run a propane bus over a diesel bus. And so with that in mind, we're going to go ahead and recommend another propane bus for the district. At the top half of that page, Thomas, Hoagland, and Bluebird are the three school bus companies in Iowa. And Thomas has a bus that they've used as a demo for the year and will give us a $2,000 discount on it. I think that's because it has about 2,000 miles on it. And then Phil would like to trade in one of our older buses and they'll give us $10,000 for that. So we'd have a net price of $77,255. To compare that, to make sure the prices were reasonable, we went to the Iowa Department of Administrative Services website and equipped a similar, a similar bus from Hoagland and it would have been 91,679 as compared to the 89,255. So it appears that that's a reasonably equipped or reasonably priced bus. Bluebird does not list the prices on there, so we weren't able to compare that one. Any other questions on the surface there?
Phil, we've got a couple of these buses already. What are your, I mean, what are your thoughts about them? Seems to me like I haven't heard any complaints or anything out of any bus drivers. What do you hear?
I think they like them just for the separate factor, nice and quiet. And then they're clean, you can let them idle and there's no fumes coming into buses as far as that. Couple of drivers that have the Ford engines don't like the power and the new propane.
Supposed to be the Chevy Bluebirds.
That'd be the Bluebird, yes. But in the other one, the Thomas bus with the Chevy engines on them, there's more power there than what they need.
Really?
And the transmissions and motors, everything computerized and they talk to each other better.
These manual or automatics?
They're automatics.
Well, I don't, I mean, I don't see, supposedly like a no-brainer.
Yeah. When you talk to them, Phil, were they set on $2,000 as a discount or can we push the envelope and get a little more? If we get them $2,000, we can run that bus basically for nothing for the year versus the other one.
Yeah, I don't think they're going to go anymore. Now, they got to go through the factory to get that.
Passenger-wise, what, that has 65, what would you say is the normal of what we have now?
65.
It is. What's the average life of a bus? How long do we keep? Just curious.
Twenty-two years.
Would you like me to address that? There used to be a law that 14 years they were done, right?
Yeah, then they changed that law.
But they pulled that law. We have...
Basically, it's on...
14, 65 passengers, is that right? For 15, 14?
Fifteen, 15, 65 passengers and we have 184 and 114.
Yeah, so we need to be looking, I mean, at one a year at a minimum to keep our fleet at least.
At one a year, we're going to have 17-year-old buses.
Yeah, so.
So that's an old bus.
And we're in pretty decent shape now because we picked up four or five of them in the last two and a half years.
Yeah, and we needed that.
So we got...
We were way behind.
If you figure it out, take that number divided by 14, divided by 12, it's less than 500 bucks a month, so.
We figured last year we put on, I think we had on annual, 200,000 miles on routes. That's a lot of miles, but we're a big district now too.
354 miles?
Yeah. So you figure we're covering 1,000 miles a day, twice a day, you know, to pick up our students.
Any other questions or motions for the Thomas?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. Everyone to the program.
Could be the SBRC allowable?
In the fall, when we get done with our enrollment and our fall beds and all that student reporting, there's a document on the state's website and there's three areas that you can get additional allowable growth in the state. It's not automatic, but it's kind of automatic. If you get increased enrollment, that's the top section. We did not have that, so we don't have any allowable growth there. If you have students that are open enrolled out this year who were not on your enrollment last year, you can get additional allowable growth for that and that's where we are eligible for a total of 69,389. And then if you have any LEP students beyond five years, which we do not at this time. So basically, what's going on here is there's students that are going to open enroll from our district to a neighboring district this year and we're going to have to pay the neighboring district $6,500 or whatever the this year's rate is. But since they weren't on last fall's enrollment, we're not getting any money for them. And while the state won't give us the cash, they'll at least give us the allowable growth with spending authority. And if we would decide to fund this then with cash, that would be through our cash reserve levy in the spring when we do our budget. So at this point, it's our recommendation that you approve it in its entirety and there's no downside.
I'll make the motion that we approve the SBRC application as presented.
All in favor of approving the motion? And item E is the one that's unavailable.
Right, item E will be on next month.
Personnel, resignation, so we'll move on to the contract.
Yep, and we actually want to complete the contract tonight, but I'd like you to approve the person for the position. There are 14 candidates, a recommendation for the instructional leader position, which is the full-time TLC grant position of Sammy Bruce. She's been offered and has accepted the position. And if you notice on that sheet that I passed out to you, what will happen is she'll have the continuing contract for second grade teaching position, which will cause a second grade vacancy, or cause of vacancy in the elementary. And then she'll have supplemental salary for 15 additional days. And once we finish negotiations for the contract, then those numbers will become available, but right now it's just her name in that position is what I asked you to approve.
As we look at next year, and you know where I'm going with this.
The answer is no. He's going to ask if we can reduce positions. Yeah, more than likely not. Mike and I've talked about that and actually most of them access as well because of size of grades, current fourth grade leading toward a middle school, that we talked about that last Thursday in our administrative meeting. And yes, by the look on your face, Mike, what you were going to ask me, so. And it was a whole lot of kids leave and exactly...
We don't want that.
And we don't want it, so, no, more than likely, yes, just no.
I would like to make a motion that we approve Sammy Bruce as instructional leader. That would thank you. This, I think, is going to be a dangerous job.
All of us in favor of recommending Sammy Bruce for the position?
Thank you for what you have, appreciate it. We went to our first two days of training last week and then the love of the second day, she was being filtered, she said, and just the other day I was thinking, and she's so anxious to get started and she said, "And now today, now I'm not, I'm wondering." I'm like, well, we're getting, we're getting...
Let's see that contract.
So that's the way that will go.
I'm not sure they were going to judge.
She's doing a really good job, so. Okay, I'm looking at the calendar. I tend to look at the State's score after two minutes, but I'm, actually, John and I had looked at it just in advance and it seems close to Christmas, but I'm going to urge you to consider it. The 21st of December is the third Monday and there are actually no school activities. And this coordinating seemed really early in the month just because of where the third Monday is about. So our recommendation is the 21st of December, 6 o'clock at faculty.
There's no duty, excellent.
I have, we will have an early graduation request from Amanda Miller for a student, so we'll get that in your packet for December and we'll have modified allowable growth for drop-off provision.
Yes.
We're guessing, so anything else?
We'll have the new positions for TLC grant.
Probably more job descriptions.
And all the board goals, I will list them tightly.
We need to meet to get them. I need them brought.
Or those. So if we keep photos on the list, conceal them.
Anything else? Is there a motion, Roger?
I'll make that motion.
All in favor? All right.